Wait, I'm gonna switch. I've got to play Hamo here.
This one was epic! Like, like really epic!
Offer your cards. In the West channel, channel.
Dare I ask, who made this abomination? I wanna know.
Uh, I read vision, okay.
The death tracks, you mean?
Yeah, who made the death, right?
Gorgon.
Okay, I guess Gorgon really knows what he's doing, because this is...
Genius.
Yeah, he's really good at editing current tracks. Except, uh... Some...
Yeah, this is from the original.
Metroid and Petrol, yeah. When it's chaos, yeah, it's good.
Honestly, wish Duck made more of this.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think I've never finished this track, actually.
I didn't.
No, I will...
No, 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 no!
Oh shit!
No!
No, no, no!
I already fell, fuck me!
Bye, bye, G!
Okay, cheers, mateys!
The power loader, the healing.
Oh, power unloaded.
Endless gaming! Oh shit, Antel pushed him off!
That could be a good move.
I am the fastest man.
Rotor bit him.
Awesome!
I hit three people!
Hey, you know what? I'm just gonna give you space.
Frost.
I don't want to come on.
Come on, Antel, kill!
You're not talking, oh no!
Oh, oh!
It's gonna throw it by Antel!
Get wrecked!
I'm uncomfortable right now.
Oh, we're gonna get him! We're gonna get him!
Oh no! Oh shit! You, you almost fell for me, Frost.
I mean, I almost fell online, but I can do it.
Oh no!
Almost killed. He's still alive. I, I should have, I think I should have gone with a... With a wheel to make it even more exciting for me. Like, what's more interesting than me, uh... Playing while... Trying to survive while drunk. Me trying to survive while drunk and, uh... Playing with something I'm unfamiliar with.
I should have killed him! It's so hard.
While you're trying to kill each other, I'm just staying comfortably in a... Insolited.
Go local again. Let's go.
And I'm also listening to some chill music. Gorgon chill from, uh, Guilty Gear.
I'm listening to Danganronpa music. Don't tell Filasso.
The cat will kill this man, he's immortal.
Lag.
Yeah, lag.
Lag.
Oh, look! Oh, he's not lagging!
I just noticed.
Oh!
Oh my god.
Fucking dope.
Yay!
Lock it like the ultimate survival.
No! You almost fell.
Oh, yes.
No death this time. Sorry, G.
I finally didn't die!
Hi, guys.
Hello.
Hello, mighty!
Hello, mighty. Don't forget to put yourself back on join, on, in the game.
You can hear echo, mighty.
Yeah.
I mean, we can count the...
Compression on, maybe? Next, something.
Oh, okay! Oh, god, oh god!
Is it, is it one really difficult?
Not really difficult. Well, you'll see.
Uh-oh, I know what it is.
I, I know this thing, I know this thing, yes. I've never thought of that.
Is this the figure eight?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a figure eight. What's this? Uh, you'll see.
This is literally... This is meant to push each other off, and especially this is so strong.
Is it the entire track?
We're gonna get pushed!
You see the entire track? It's the figure eight.
Let's perform Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu to others.
Time to kill! Antel?
Hey, you know what? I'm gonna stay behind for like 3 seconds, if you want. I wanna get this camera.
Yolo! Kill!
We killed, you know?
Oh shit! No, 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 please don't kill me!
Oh god, oh god, that's scary. I would have, I almost died from the inside.
Why I almost killed those, hold up?
Dude!
Kill lock!
Lock has been murderized.
I, I have a feeling, I have a feeling that G fell. On that last. You think? I thought I had a feeling.
I'm trying to push people off and bite myself.
I could not push the punga.
The ponga?
Ponga to the dogs.
I'm just trying to survive. I mean, that being said, I'm actually going kind of fast forward, just trying to survive.
Take some more damage.
I feel like this track is actually kind of easy. Honestly.
No!
What? I jinxed Frost, let's go! Let's go! I feel like I'm gonna make a target out of myself. By just saying that this track is somewhat easy. And by saying that I'm gonna make a target out of myself.
I can watch this entire track on F6, like...
Yeah, sick.
No one's dying! Come on, where is the death that I want? I want death!
It says it tracks! You should do powers for falling dead.
I was going to killing someone, okay? It's a normal cause.
Do that on a death tracks, on, no repo, try to survive. My life.
Oh shit! One lap, one lap to finish, no!
I did it! Oh no! Apo pepo, people!
How did you finish that, eh?
I'm thinking...
Well... Half people died.
Fastest love, baby, Aouf!
Lock is killing everyone!
I saw this happening, it's a good time.
I'm tired!
I'm crying, I'm crying, I'm already having a good time. Two shots, only took two shots to have a good time, yes.
Okay, death track now. Put yourselves into join, everyone. Don't forget to...
Join the game. Okay, pick on...
Wow, I survived two tracks in a row. Wow.
Congratulations, I can say the same. I survived one, tracking the road, I'm shaking with that.
Uh-oh.
Can you hear us, mighty? I hope so.
Oh shit!
I'm afraid. Yeah, I, I see black. Never, never been here.
Now did you see the black line on the left?
Oh, I have a bomb.
Oh shit! Oh shit, die!
I'm going after my...
No!
I'm alive.
Oh god!
I guess. I didn't see the manhole!
Oh, oh no! I'm gonna stay here forever! No!
I didn't see the fucking manhole, dude.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay here forever! No! No, I can't, I can't get out of this!
I mean, I...
Please, if they...
No, you, you're stuck.
Yeah!
Take it back!
Someone come here and shoot us, please.
I'm... Wait! I'm going, I'm going to F6.
I think, I think BGM can...
Yeah, BGM can, I cannot.
No, no, I can't, look at this.
Where? Oh shit, we are doomed, BGM! I can't get out of this! Did you F6? F6, I think it's better for sure.
I'm not using the camera. You don't have TV time on? No. Well, you're lost.
Oh.
Antel, please help me!
Please.
Please! Shockwave us, please! No, no, zap me! No!
What the fuck is going on here?
Wait, I'm out, I'm out!
I never expected to die here!
I'll help you, G.
Shockwave me, please!
What the fuck is happening here? How are you stuck there?
Hold up, hold up, hold up.
Okay.
I can't, I can't... I am, oh, I am, I am under the, the, it's more the wooden ramp.
Okay, I'm gonna let you fake. You look like you're above on my side, what the fuck?
Hold up, hold up. You just, you just kill yourself.
Wait, wait, hold up, there's a pickup here, I can help you. Not with this, hold up. For fuck's sake.
How did I fall here anyway? Oh, fuck.
No, 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 no! Bang a fucking coast, eh?
Man, I'm not getting anything to help you.
No, ju- ju- just go racing, don't worry about me.
No, no, no! There's no point. I, I haven't seen that.
Okay, prepare, prepare. Okay, okay, uh, okay, let me just go more to this, right?
Help me one, help me one. What's happening here? Everyone is stuck. Oh, oh, they see you above the ramp. Help me one.
No! Okay, uh, well... Use it, whatever.
It's actually possible.
Oh, okay!
That one's finished. Oh no. Someone leading the world.
It's impossible, it's impossible. I don't think I can get out.
Fuck. I, I don't think Elsa can continue, because he sees you above.
Really?
Really? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, no.
I'm stuck too.
Oh, mighty.
This is amazing. This is amazing. What's happening here is fucking amazing. Ah, okay, now you're below, now you're below. You're next to the point where you're stuck, I think, but now the people are free to go.
How did I get in here, man?
I have no fucking idea. You're a fucking magician.
You did the Tetris spin. Getting there.
Uh... Okay, I'm just gonna spec now.
Aw. I, I was dead before even the first turn, man. I didn't see the manhole at the start.
No, I, I was dead before even the first turn.
Ow!
The shockwave at the start threw me off to the side where there are holes.
Thing is, I went slow and I still died. Stop thanking me, I'm one lap behind, holy shit.
But it even moved.
Oh, you can, you've actually got... Oh, no!
You're still struggling?
Reprotor.
I, I feel like yours is a lost cause, Frost.
Oh, it is.
Okay, we are all waiting for BGM now?
Yeah, only BGM left.
Yeah, apparently, yes. Boy played safe. You know? I think you can hear me, too. So retarded.
It might actually be doable, come on, Rotor.
Guys? Where are you? Can you hear me? In the river.
Yes, close, close.
Frost, where are you? In the river. They're in the water, you can lock her in the water.
You cannot, uh, you...
BGM, just go, just go, just go.
If you, if you have a ball, drop it, then.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 I... I managed to get out of the river somehow.
Yeah, uh, bigger cars with four-wheel drive can get out. I, I got out better last year.
I, I thought I was doomed, though. I panicked for a bit.
I honestly think Rotor can do it, I need to get down.
I have a shockwave, I can try. I, I feel like you have, you, uh, should do safe, uh, for us, honestly. Like, this is called blind faith.
Wait.
Okay, now. With speed. To go.
Almost.
I don't think you can have him, honestly.
From the hill.
Can I go on top of the hill?
I, I like how, uh... Like, where are they? You were all going on to lock.
Finish, BGM, finish! We need to move on.
Please finish, come on. We have another session to go as well. BGM.
A ball!
Okay.
Drop a ball!
Look at she didn't go on.
Next. Computer virus! Computer virus!
Don't worry about it, computer virus is fine.
Computer has virus. Well, if you're R- R- Rotor, you should worry about it.
No, 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 no worries at all.
I'll take Rotor.
Antel, join.
Oh, so bad.
Antalopis, join now.
Yeah, let's go.
Let's die.
I think that color is always time to have some effect on me.
I just realized, there, there's another VA cup, and I'm gonna play the VA cup drunk, what the fuck?
Let's go!
Okay, how, how do you play that?
You don't... You don't turn!
You're too mighty, like, you just...
Alright, guys, my bet tonight on the video is gonna die, I'm gonna take... Mercy, oh shit. Wait, you can go. Oh, move!
You're not on the tank!
Adam, bro, please don't block. Wow! For fucks sake. What was that? Wait, how do you... BGM, oh my god! Add the tactic. BGM, like, never tried! Yes. You just jump for the hook, just jump for those.
So, it's like, man!
That's just perfect! Wait! Am I the, um, am I last? There are survivors? Only six now?
Nope. Yeah, six.
My god! I love it.
It's five, actually.
There's a lot of survivors, we just, uh... Separated. I see six.
Gee, cheese, cheese for you, man!
I checked again, I, I thought someone fell down.
I drank, I drink for you as well!
Oh my god, how am I gonna do this for three laps?
1-1 in deaths, man.
Rotor, don't mean me.
I'm gonna kill the bitten! It's my mission!
I have to kill the two small guys here.
Do you have to?
No, eh?
Yes. That's why I'm here.
Zappa just died.
You can actually... Did he fall there?
I almost fell in the revolver.
I have no idea what happened to me there, okay?
It's so fast, I'm gonna block it.
Come join me, G.
I blocked. Oh, wait, Locke is here.
Kill him! Kill him!
I'm coming!
Okay, okay. Are you ready? Are you ready for this?
Do it together.
You block, you need it.
Sacrifice yourself.
Sacrifice yourself.
He's looking at us! He's looking... He thinks, he thinks he's smart. No, no, no! Am I stuck?
Oh, fuck.
Am I stuck?
Oh my god, Frost.
Get him! Get him!
You're stuck, Frost. Bye, bye.
Oh no, Frost.
Wait, how am I missing, man? How, how are you, duck?
I can't do it!
What am I missing?
I'm missing a fuck ton of action now.
Can I repo? No?
No, you cannot repo.
No, no repo track, meanwhile, Frost, can I repo?
Locke! Come here, Locke!
Um...
Someone help! Someone help!
I think I lost like 1000 brain cells already.
I can't move. Wait, I'm actually moving, right? I think I'm moving, I don't know, but...
Wait, I...
Yes, you're moving slowly, right?
Like that?
Wow, I don't have much time.
G, now explain your actions.
Uh, yes.
You might, you might be able to use your repo with, your repo works worse, do it... Hold on, hold on, I lost my ability.
Oh, there we go! What? You did it!
You did it!
Gaming.
He's live, I missed it! I was trying to think! I was trying to use my brain, it's, it's starting to get a little bit hard. Three shots of, uh, 40% alcohol does something to your brain, you know?
Yes, I'm, I'm already feeling it. The effects.
I'm only drinking 9% beer.
I mean, I'm drinking whiskey. So, uh...
Oh, yes, let's go. Rotor, best car.
Well, he did, he did finish. So yeah, best car confirmed.
Yes.
But he didn't finish first, or second, or third, or fourth. Barely fifth.
G, I wanna see a clip tomorrow.
The signal isn't in the pack anymore, damn.
Okay, daydreaming.
Wait, wait, I'm changing car.
Yeah, change cars and join everyone. That was spec.
Change cars, why?
I, I mean, I, I...
He was standing specifically to power, because he used the wrong car, he picked the wrong car.
Yeah, I realized that the signal isn't in RV anymore.
Oh, so Drone Champ is not really on... Wait, what, what heck?
Drone Champ is in the pack. No, 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 he was picking, trying to pick dual signal.
Oh, okay. I see.
Do you?
What the heck?
G, it's time for revenge.
Oh shit!
Oh my god!
Run away!
Come here, Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu.
No! Get away! Run, run!
Ah, mission failed.
Lock is done.
No!
Game's drawn.
G!
Fuck, someone, right? Fuck, I definitely cracked, uh...
Fuck!
Actually, you go ahead, come on.
Oh, it is a... Mighty, look away! My god!
Wait for me, I cannot... Fuck! Wait, uh, there's six already, wow!
Wow!
Mighty!
Actually, five.
Five!
I'm dumb.
Come on, Parry, you know what to do! Almost.
Wait, wait for someone, wait for some...
Holy shit! Oh, Parry, please kill five next level!
Mighty rather important life.
Yep.
Parry, you know what to do?
I can't even see how many laps are missing, because the, the sky is white.
It's white.
I, I can see probably. Do not go, wait. For me, I can follow you.
Mighty is the final lap. It's the final lap.
Ah, fuck! Another lap?
No, no! No, not!
I'm computing!
You're starting final laps.
Yeah, starting for the lap now.
Ashen!
Fuck, say, guys lied to him!
I don't want no points. Uh, this power loader is peaceful. I'm breaking so much.
This is, this revived. This is glorious.
Thank you, mighty.
Mighty, I know you finished the track, but you fall anyway.
Yep.
Time to drink?
No, shut up, Nick, no. No, you, you don't want to kill him.
Sorry.
We need this man alive.
I, I can, I can make jokes for you, okay?
How is it going so soon?
You think I'm not following up on your jokes? What the fuck is wrong with you?
I'm not sure.
Ah...
The truck, the truck.
Come on, Ashen, you are playing like a drunk person, the fuckman.
Oh, I wonder why? Imagine if we, if pickups were here, it would be... Oh, no, oh, no. The effects of the alcohol took over me, as soon as you said that, I went full deep. I think we should enable pickups. No, 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 no.
Nah, 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 bro.
Nah.
Okay, do you... Do you want pickups? You get pickups.
We're getting a, we're getting a death track now.
Yeah, but it's, it's one of the, uh, the, the easier ones.
I mean, you say that, but, uh... But they all have, um... Hidden surprises, right?
Three pickups on, I'm, I'm already drunk, I cannot... Change the settings properly.
Uh, people, remember to go back to ready. Join the game.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll join.
Thank you for the reminder.
You're welcome! Sorry. Antalo! Antalito! You still spectating?
Toga?
There you go!
Toga?
Let's go.
Toga.
What are Toga? Oh, there's Toga. Toga! Toga, Toga!
I see a man of culture here.
Yes.
Homem de cultura!
What the fuck is that called?
It's trainy, lol.
Trainy! Locke is in the true man.
Just pause in the chat.
No, 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 don't push it.
Yes, Venice?
Yes, this is Venice, but actually, half way.
Nice, he won falling, good spot so far.
No! Fuck, I am already...
Bye, Gee.
Ah, for fuck's sake! Cheers, mateys!
Cheers.
This thing is alive, never mind!
Oh, come on!
Yes!
Aw, Nick.
I hate you, BGM.
He got killed!
I oiled him.
Thanks for telling me that there's an oil nearby. Sorry though.
Who did the fat slug?
There's a fat slug?
Yeah.
It's rotor on battery.
Oh, there's the oil, thank God I went slower.
Oh, Frost, you're still in, oh?
I have my balloons!
Yeah. I thought I killed him, but I didn't, I died.
No, man, you killed yourself.
I killed myself.
Dark.
Ah.
Oh! I get wrecked, get wrecked!
Expect to die on that, rotor, random boom.
A lot of people...
And it's drinking well.
Well, BGM is destroying everyone.
The fat slug is gaming.
Oh, small mistake! Small dogs?
Yeah, he is down, he is down!
He tried to go on the outside of the fat slug, and the fat slug, no. But now power loader verted fat slug.
Come on, Ashen, you know what to do!
It's awkward.
You know what to do, come on!
Oh! It's awkward. Okay.
Oh, Sephardia died on his own, I think.
Mighty, you're so much...
Mighty, what the fuck?
Wow, even though this track is very hard to die, a lot of people died anyway.
Oh, it's easy pickup.
It's called pickups. Alright, so this is my, the... This is so far the one death track I completed.
Nice.
Oh, so bad.
Good deaths in a row, let's go.
Yeah, I haven't done a death track yet.
According to the plan.
Big players, remember to go back to ready.
Yeah. Good point. I go to the lobby every time, I can warn everyone.
The earlier, the better.
Any mighty's?
Okay, I'm gonna switch cars, hold up. Oh my goodness, floating world.
I love floating world.
Want to play...
Any who moves in the trap?
Oh, no, floating world with a bad car, okay, I'm committing to power loader, I don't give a fuck.
Okay, I'm done.
This is our signature.
At home. It's not my signature, I'll tell you that much!
Any at-home Bioli?
At-home Bioli, the best track.
Last year, I destroyed Antel.
He died!
Uh-huh.
Man, I feel cheeky.
Oh, BGM!
Oh, I killed a Tugget! Minus one Tugget.
No! I'm gonna get stuck on the rocks! Fuck! No, please, please, okay. I'm out, I'm out, I'm out, boys! No!
Uh, why are you, Gee?
I died already.
Oh, you fell?
Man, I am mostly not playing. I'm mostly not playing anything. Oh, Antel!
I was on such a close track, god damn it.
Why would you play such a car that lands so poorly, Parry?
Uh, I love it. If I get like, um, if I die like three or three times, I change car. Oh my god, Pangali slowed down.
Oh, Nutman is loading the alcohol into Mighty, oh!
Come on!
You give Lampert!
Thank god I take care there, because I know it's a death spot.
Actually, no mercy whatsoever.
Oh, wait a second, Ashen, break. The luck I'm doing here is very risky.
Well, the power loader, man, is ballsy.
Oh, Anto, oh! Nick is waiting.
Cute.
Oh, Parry!
You have no more to kill, man.
I took the risk.
Oh, 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 wait, oh, oh shit, let's go!
Oh!
The fuck happened?
Man, because I go slow, I miss all the actions. Was that a double kill happening here?
I'm double dead.
I'm so proud of you, Nick.
Only fifty boss survive.
I'm so proud of you.
I love that some alcohol.
That was so good, I love it. Okay.
Oh, fuck.
Oh, god damn it, dude.
Hitman services, by the way.
I'm gonna switch.
Okay. Frost, join. Oh, the bird.
It's mass time. El Raton Autista.
Raton Altista!
Oh my god, the rat.
I should switch to Mautist too, let me switch.
Wow!
I'm going.
Or mobi trick, fuck it, mobi trick.
Mobi trick.
You're suicidal, that's all I'll say.
Oh, we've got a patriots.
Patriotic.
Oh, patrioto!
Oh shit!
I just see Frost bouncing everywhere.
I mean, he's playing rotor, he expected.
I'm smart, man, I'm smart.
Oh, Jesus!
Nope, Frost, nope.
I try so hard.
Should I go for the boost?
I'd say no, but then again, I don't think you're...
I'm gonna say no.
You're not drunk enough yet.
What? Okay, that was ballsy. Oh, the landing issues! Oh! Poor Esteban!
What the hell was that?
Oh! I almost...
That's gonna kill me, man.
No!
That's dumping Gee, what the fuck?
He died, okay, get to hell, holy shit!
Uh...
I'm dying!
Oof, mighty, mighty, he's... He's back, mighty.
He's on the demiolo, no care.
He's so funny!
He's trying to kill me!
What the fuck?
Come on, poor ugly babe. You do that?
Mighty!
You dig, mate?
Mighty gonna take it out.
Please, I will.
I'm not even drinking, man.
Try to breathe, Gee. Oh! Oh, oh, it's wrong, it's wrong.
Oh, the fat slug, the fat slug is big, right?
Okay, let me finish one track, I finished only one track so far.
Oof, and Raton Autista, I mean, I love it.
See you this time. Oh, second track finished.
Oh, buddy's alive, cheese alive, honey's alive. Come on, Ersu, you can do it! No, I better watch him, anyone, again.
Oh, come on!
Who died? No, 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 no.
And Ersu!
The fat slug is...
Oh, that was actually close, it's falling off, man.
Okay, that's... Nine survived, but I was unnoticed. Four dead for this.
God damn it, dude.
I need to play P O B S.
Okay, pickups on.
Six dies of nine nights.
Let me pick up BGM, go back to join, join the game, you're welcome.
Gee?
Hmm?
Is there Museum 1 in the...
Uh, there is Museum 2.
Aw.
Complaints, complaints direct at Gorgonito, man.
Imagine, no, no, imagine Museum 1, but the walls are missing.
Museum 1, but floor is missing. Oh shit, oh shit, wait, wait, okay, yes, it's, uh, it's in there, man.
I have the spawn.
Oh shit.
Oh god.
Oh, damn.
I am afraid of that. Knowing how most of my experience is here, I'm afraid of...
Oh god, oh no! Whoa, no, no! God!
Went for it.
You know what? Anyone who dodged it...
Did I see my amazing breakdown?
Oh god! Oh, Jesus, oh, it's hard.
Oh, god damn it.
Hey, what happened?
This is our...
I need to complete at least one place with this patriot. Garcia and Eri.
It's a lonely bullet.
Oh, it's ice!
Yeah, it's ice, it's very ice.
Everything is ice.
I just want to be hard. Oh, we're so low, oh shit, those boxes.
You retold it!
Oh, no!
Uh, mouse driving road.
Um...
No, Gee, no!
What did you just said, BGM?
What did you say?
What?
Oh!
Oh, that was scary.
I know!
Man, at least I played it for a while.
Oh, please, no!
Get him up, get him up!
The star!
Oh, the Strini.
No, no, no!
As a press repo, trust me, it helps.
No, 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 no!
No! You dick, Ashen!
I am the dick! It's while you're yourself, dude.
Aw, for fuck's...
Oh, we're doing it, we're doing it cowboy style! Oh, wait, is this going?
No! No! Fuck!
You can do it, turn the salater below.
Oh god.
I need to finish that with patriots.
The priority target is escaping, get him!
Don't pull it, destiny!
He doesn't even want to go.
Oh, game, thanks a lot for watching, man.
Oh, god! I'm gonna push them!
What? Why did I break him, guys? Ah, kidding, kidding, kidding. No, I might break him.
Okay, I know you're not, I know it's not looking as bad on your screen, Gee, it's looking online because of the lag, but you look fucking drunk in that section. Live, a lot, live, live, right, live, right, a lot, live, bro, right, a lot.
Oh no!
That, that I can respect, that I can respect.
Totally wrong.
Oh god!
I tried so hard to kill life.
So catchy.
Oh god, I always forget about the ice.
I have to go for another B.
Ay, ay, it's wrong, perdón. Ay, perdona, perdona.
He said the Strini is alive.
Oh, the fuck! Fuck!
Revenge!
Not dead, mate.
No fun, kill Strini.
This Strini is alive! Oh shit! Oh!
God.
Oh!
No Strini alive.
I didn't even see the kill on the screen, ah.
No, Strini is alive.
How is the fat alive? It's just blind.
I don't know, but, uh, I don't know what happened for the fact that I... I think I'm just saying, you're doing this for nothing. I hope you know.
Ersu can't really die, no?
Yeah, exactly! He's shooting Ersu for nothing. They're fighting for nothing, just put in the fucking track!
Go back, man!
Come on! There you go. Thank you, my dear idiots.
The best.
No problem.
I changed my name to Mouse.
You're welcome, you're welcome, mate.
Guys, shut up, I need to focus, I'm too drunk to read. Uh, grayscale, okay, pickups after left.
Doing back.
Nice.
Oh, grayscale road.
I love this track, by the way.
Power, join. Oh, I forgot to press the station, Antalo, Antalo! Join, 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 come on, come on! There you go, yeah! Fuck out!
I'm back.
I know, Parry.
Yeah, you can go.
What? What are the... At the half way? Uh, who wants an additional push?
Let start!
I want zero, for sure.
What, that I don't know the track? I'm gonna be chanted, Frost.
Don't worry about it.
Frost?
Don't worry about it.
Time to murder.
Time to murder.
Time to murder.
Oh god, oh god, oh my god, I don't like seeing that. This Mighty.
No!
That's lost.
God, please, don't push me. Oh shit, no, oh shit!
There is an invitation, there is an invitation, don't say anything. Oh no, landing issues, okay. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, 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 yes, yes!
What the fuck is the job?
Fuck!
Nope, I wouldn't wish for that.
No, it's not, no, no, the choice.
You know what, go ahead. Also, Raton Autista, you can go ahead.
Run away! No, this road, no, no, please, please!
This road is too long.
Marcy, Marcy, my soul!
Marcy? Who is you? My ass.
Marcy, my soul, Marcy, my soul, please.
You know what? U P C wants another kill.
P C.
I think I'm gonna be overtaken by a fast. Summaral laser.
For fuck's sake!
I eliminated him!
Landing issues, no!
Even off the bus!
That job is just...
Even off the bus!
Even off the bus! What the fuck is going on here?
Oh shit!
That was scary.
No shit!
Oh, we have two hundred kill guy here.
Uh, cheating, I'm gonna try.
Nobody possession, I'm using repo.
No, nobody possession, uses repo, cheat. I call cheat.
This guy, distress! Come on, Raton Altista! Parry, you know what?
I hate that thing.
You know what to do?
Me shit, don't try.
Oh no! No! Get wrecked! That's exactly where I died, Gee, I feel you, man.
Yay! I did it!
Amazing how...
Oh, hell yeah!
What the fuck are you doing?
The jungle man wants, what the hell?
Thank you, thank you, Ali!
What the hell?
Oh my god!
Ay, ay, ay! Nice one, nice one, Parry! Amazing how Ersu have survived all those things with a puzzle.
Ersu the fast boy. Join back.
Okay, uh, what's the next track again? Oh god, okay, now, this one is a killer.
Is this my favorite track? I think it is.
Aim for all the simplicity, no repo.
Oh god, man, this is gonna be a slaughter.
Any honk with Berta in the chat? Coming here.
I'm excited, if this is the one I'm thinking about.
Yes, it is, this.
This is... This is where I rodo roo rada, uh, honk. Yes.
Oh my goodness.
And when you fall on your shoulders...
Can't give point nine to both?
Thank you! Alright!
Come on!
Oh wait, not people, you go! My god, what the heck? No, 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 no! I saw no!
Come on, patona pista!
I deserve that, I deserve that. I deserve it.
Oh, Spanto, die!
Oh, mi god!
Oh no, Nick is in high.
Oh, that's fine.
Coming in that sport, oh shit.
Die! Ezra got destroyed!
Nooo, he doesn't look, no, that's not true.
Move your fat ass, la! Move your, move your fat ass!
Did you do that for me, Katsupin?
I tried to push you, but I pushed myself. Oh my god! Oh god!
Oh shit, man.
Trying to take my shot, guys!
That's three people, oh my god!
Oh no, the location.
Okay.
Oh no.
Last year, no one survived. Yeah.
No, I have to compete the one race with Patrion. Please, god.
You want the Patriot?
Please, Jesus.
Come on, Nick, you can do it!
Come on, two people.
I trust you! I trust you!
Team Nick! The furious Nick on the way.
Oh boy, this is scary.
Porrasid! Porrasid!
Oh god!
Paul, we go ahead. I'm big now, ohhh! I'm gonna stay as if this sucks.
Hold on!
Please, I got to finish.
Like a...
God damn it!
It's up the wall, he... Now, wait, if Nick kills Paul, he's... He's back on his next park.
Oh god!
Paul, will I die?
Not yet.
Paul, he's running away.
I see the recount. I'm fighting now.
Oh my god! Oh god!
He's just very speeding.
Oh! The hesitation! Come on, who's gonna make the difference?
No!
Oh god!
I could not get...
Yeah! Oh, Paray! Come on, Paray! Wow!
I'm gonna be like, I'm like, fuck!
Oh my god! Finish, for fuck's sake!
No, let me finish, please, please!
Not about finishing!
Oh shit!
He died, no?
No, he didn't!
Not yet.
Danny, you don't go anywhere!
He's replaying all stuff!
This is... Oh my god, not this plan!
Nick is on Malice, come on, come on, not money! Oh god damn it!
Oh, he ran away. Who is Bakam, by the way?
It's Esteban.
Esteban.
Esteban, uh, you are the only survivor, cheers!
The fuck? Bakamita!
Masid!
Just the thunder force.
Dame, dame! Dame, dame, dame!
I'm done. I'm done with Patrion.
Sugi, sugi!
That's what I like to call it, great combo.
It is, it's okay. Unbelievable. Me, respect!
Yes, okay.
Fuck, I, I, uh, join!
Oh, Titanic uno?
Oh, I need to join, I'm a fucking idiot!
See, I'm going out everything.
You should not switch the pack, I suppose.
Don't worry, G, you're hosting KO now and lobby is full.
Road, road in the sky, road in the sky. Yeah, this one.
Road of the... What is that? Oh, this one.
Oh, okay, this one should be easy. Famous last words?
Onga?
Onga! Onga?
Benga.
Here!
Is that a Clox?
Who's driving two fucking legs?
I pushed, I pushed Esteban off!
No, no, he's alive. He's alive, he was very lagging.
How, what the hell?
Oh, he was...
He did cool, also he's...
I don't know what happened.
Oh, the formula, nice idea.
Oh god!
Oh no, we lost, we lost someone there. Someone went there. I tried to push before here, though, I can't do it.
How the heck are you doing?
He's a draw!
I almost fell!
I fell off on my own!
The job, man.
How to assassinate myself? He died in a tunnel, I don't know why.
I'm disconcentrated, no one's saying anything! Yeah? I'm also drinking over the fact that, uh, I can feel the way the alcohol is, uh... Man, everyone's so fast! When, when the fuck did you get so good? No!
Oh no, this is your plan!
For fuck's sake! Did you think I was rolling down the... I was trying to push a rolling rotor, but I killed myself in the process.
How many more tracks we will be... Oh, but almost like, how many more tracks could be if we had? Oh, the truck died!
My, my, my cat wants cuddles, cuddles! Want cuddles? Easy! Oh, you're so cute!
Oh, oh, oh!
Get wrecked! What did I miss? Get wrecked! Come on, I finished a second ago, what the fuck did I miss?
Roto bastard!
Roto bastard!
Oh god, wow, it's finished already? Holy shit, you guys are, you guys are fast! It was only four laps and this track is easy. The fact that you failed should be fucking embarrassing. Hello, Foxit! I'm so, I'm so embarrassed, oh god, I am so embarrassed, I'm sorry for that.
I'm disgusting!
Don't ever call me Forest, call me Ashen, please.
He's a forest.
Ashen Kun, please! That's what's happening. Ashen Senpai, please.
Ah, Museum 2!
No, I, I am trying to read, I can't read! Uh... Museum 2, uh, pickups on three laps. I'm getting it.
You know what?
You get, you get an A.
Wait, 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 wait me, wait me.
G, you get an A on your snow check.
Yes, with three more.
I, I, I almost did the normal Museum 2 because I'm that good. Congratulations, congratulations!
Well called, Ghibli, it's Minito Yeka.
I used poison. Come on.
Monkas. I, I agree, it's a monkas.
Join!
What's that? Nick went, uh, bathroom break. Nick, are you here? Nick, are you here? Nick, are you here? No? Okay.
Uh, I typed like, be right back 20,000.
Yeah, 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 I heard, I tried to check if you're here now.
Now I'm here.
A certain amount of time past, you know?
Okay, understandable, actually.
Yes.
Forbidden?
Forbidden! Forbidden!
Why is this forbidden?
G, just start the race, please! God damn it, dude!
Why is the toilet reserved for me?
Hello Toilet Peter, how are you?
Oh god! Wait, I, I, I didn't get a pickup, what the hell? If you load it last, oh god! What the hell are you doing? You know what I said?
Oh, this is fucking slippery. No!
Why there are force fields?
Yeah, there's force field, be careful! Oh yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah! Yes, I can finish it, yes!
Oh no!
No, doggy!
Oh no!
What the hell, you need to see that?
No!
I'm gonna stay for level 7.
Here! No! Oh my god! Holy shit!
What? No, the force field.
Bye, Paray!
No, no!
I'm gonna stay here for...
Is there a fucking turret?
No!
Go, go, go push it! What is that rocket doing? No! The oil!
Go push, uh...
Please!
I made a mistake.
He's on the edge, he's on the edge!
Okay!
Keep going, keep going!
What is going on?
Seven. Oh, we didn't tolerate the death.
Oh god! Okay! Good, good thing that by default I don't go for the shortcut. Good thing! What the hell? Oh. I see. Oh, what the fuck? I'm not trusting that path. Oh! Wait.
Ay, out. D, D, must be a brother, D.
No!
Oi, 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 oi!
Come on, Ezra, you can do it! Oh shit, oh shit! Wow, boys, nice!
Here, god! I'm too heavy, you can't touch me, Ezra! You can't touch me! Oh my god, I'm, I'm almost...
You're so good, fam!
He helped us, but he exactly for this reason, you fucking dick!
What the hell was that?
Run away! Ezra's chasing my ass! I'm out, I'm out, I'm out!
Nice!
What's the point? No, the VGM is online!
Holy shit, I almost...
VGM used revive.
Okay, I'm, I'm done.
Oh, VGM, we finally should die, though.
Wait, I'm one lap down, hold, hold up, I need to finish.
Oh, no, no! Ah, no, he died on the...
That was so good! I'm concentrating so hard!
You need, you need more acceleration, I guess.
He's hot!
Hello, there, can we catch it?
Oh, boy, god!
We like it.
Now we have to wait to be the VGM, I said.
I'll flip the way I go, then. Also, great. Oh yeah, my shot! I was still focused on the... God damn it! Five were happening. Okay, cheers!
Cheers! I'm gonna drink with you, man.
BGM, if you don't do best lap, I'm gonna destroy you. What's wrong? Just because he feels like it.
Okay.
He's drunk. What, what do you expect from him?
I am not bored.
What the fuck is talking about? No! See? See? I destroyed him with my mental ability! I destroyed him with my mental ability!
Silent him to death, bro!
Yeah. Oh my god! Good night, BGM!
So, we don't have with him or not?
I have already proved I can do it, wait.
Okay, give him though.
How many times did you give him?
I can't read! Museum 2, pickups on 3 laps.
Man, don't drink!
The next one is road.
Road of simplicity.
No! Okay, it's the road of simplicity, I'm sorry. God damn it, six laps.
Someone's sending something, I think this. Go, go ready.
Go for, go for kills, Ashen. It's the most satisfying thing you can do.
Join!
Cross lock.
If I go for kills, I'll die myself!
Roto, come on, Zapatilla, come on! Okay, we're ready.
Came to honk very hard.
Oh!
Is it Uncle TT?
Oh, then, my eyes.
What the heck?
Oh yeah, I remember this one. Don't bully me, Panda, with the ugly face.
Oh yes, this track. Time for, time for ears to die. Please! Please don't molest my ass!
I'm ready, no, this is impossible. Bye! T V, come on!
You cheated!
Yeah, I'm back.
You have no idea how much I'm trying to win this stuff. My god! Wait, I did a leopard ready, what the hell?
Lager momento.
Oh, gee! What the?
My god, man! Dude! I, I can't finish a track!
Oh, wait, that's a pull-up, that's a pull-up, bro! Oh! He's alive!
He al- he almost got him.
He's alive?
No!
You see?
Beautiful suicide, though.
Ashen, you suck!
Oh my god, Ashen. He enjoyed that one.
I mean, it's... It's so hard to get someone who is, who like...
Especially with Roto.
Nah, it's typically because I don't know where he is.
I killed myself again.
BGM! I have a mission for you.
BGM, the boy. Kill yourself.
You are the finisher!
Light, yeah.
I'm so, I'm so disappointed.
Mission first, just fully.
Because you won! I made him fall, I made him fall, to pay for these things. Did I remind me?
I feel so bad about last race.
Wait, is that all? Yes!
No, no.
Uh, for this race, yes, but for the session, I don't know.
Titanic 1.
Titanic 1, pickups on 3 laps.
3, 4, 5, 6, we still have 7 months!
Let's go!
Titanic 1, pickups on 3 laps. Okay. I saw you coming, Foxit! Yes!
Holy shit!
Lamp join!
Antel, antel!
I'm sorry.
Antel, join!
This is great! This is great!
Wait, this is the normal Titanic.
Right!
We only play in normal parts.
Deep points, I got that?
Yeah, that was normal Titanic. Drone!
Oh my god, they're rocking! Oh my god, I feel like I'm gonna get sick already.
With the fucking snow, bro.
So people can throw up?
No, save me, please! Save me!
Okay.
He just sees it.
What the hell is going on?
Think I killed someone?
Someone exploded into oblivion!
That was my fake.
Cool, bro.
Someone is blocking the phone.
My god, gee, what the fuck?
Oh, motherfucker, oh dude.
We can get down.
Yeah, dude, bro. Just kill me.
Shoot me or something.
G, get the fuck out of the way!
Yeah!
I can just turn around.
Oh god. Not moving!
I did it!
Oh!
I did it!
We can move on.
Oh, goddammit! No, no!
I'm assuming this area is safe?
Oh no, can't make sure.
Okay, that part is not safe.
Oh shit, dude!
Hold on. No, I don't have... Okay, thank god.
I have to be careful with...
Gee, remember that it takes 4 seconds for me to be able to get that again?
No, I'm drunk, what do you expect from me?
I expected to remember the rules of the fucking game!
No!
That's it. I have low expectations and you didn't even meet those.
I must go keep my fake!
Expectations were low, but holy fuck.
Come on, Panorama!
No! You are under the ground, what the hell?
I was only 1 point below. Get fucked! Wait, what? Wait, what? Excuse me? Wait, how? Um... Now I see him. Oh, I wasn't taking... Oh my god, that's a ball! Oh my god!
No, 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 no! Get wrecked, get wrecked!
No, don't shoot me.
Oh, dead peda.
Ashen, I'm gonna...
Oh no! Oh no!
Battle of the drones?
You're not doing well.
Oh, Panorama!
That was a nice move, Gee.
Panorama kills! Get wrecked! I mean wrecked, get!
I actually killed the guy without realizing it.
This is a proper revolt experience.
Oh, luck.
Ah! I'm safe. Wait, wait, can I actually get... Get back from here?
Nope, nope.
I think you... No, no, don't try it. Uh, why am I helping you? You should be happy that you survived, man.
I wanna win! Oh well, I can't win, but I can do the next best thing with spinning.
You know, someone just gave you a chance to do 1 additional lap. So go ahead. Don't kill yourself. Do, Gee, go, go my donator.
Donator. I'm gonna make you proud, my man.
I want to be proud?
I can do it, Ezzy's expecting good things from me.
It's pretty fun.
What am I doing? Why am I doing the things I'm doing?
Let's do best lap, right now.
Picking from the wall.
You saw nothing.
Back again.
You saw nothing.
It's so rich and full.
I already fucked my lap. Someone stop this man, he's so fast! Oh no! What the fuck am I gonna do?
Fucking drunk. Better than Fast and Furious.
Fast and Fong's.
Oh yeah.
I'm still left 2, what the fuck?
That's a better try.
I'm still left 2, what am I doing with my life?
No, you're 3...
You can catch Ashen, go on.
Come on, man!
What happened? Did he die?
Yes! Carano! Gee? I'm not proud at all. Which car am I? Okay, Panorama, there's something over there.
I... What the fuck? I already closed the lobby. Uh...
BGM, the lobby is still alive.
I'm so sorry. I disappointed... I can't type! I...
Gee, come on! You're very high.
I disappointed you, my man.
I9m.
Uh, Gee, I'm just saying, Ezzy is in the voice channel.
Hello, dude!
He can hear you. Ezzy can hear you?
Yes, Ezzy can hear everything.
Yes. He's been here since the fucking beginning, man.
Yes, I can hear.
Did everyone finish? Please help me.
Yes!
Oh, thank you! Uh, what is it next? Uh... RV Rainbow Road of Lights.
My Joel. RV Rainbow.
Lights.
I joined before he starts, by the way.
RV Rainbow... Oh, I love this one! Join!
Nikon.
Uh, this one is this one. It has UFOs. I'm trying to say smart stuff, I can't.
I'm gonna switch cars, hold on.
Also, Nick...
Nick, uh, join.
Yes, he's on, he starts this one already.
Nikon, you hear us?
Yes, 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 sorry.
My god, we have half an hour for the cup! I'm so ready! I'm so ready!
Are you ready?
Oh, no, Panorama, amigo!
Rotor beaten is not ready, what is he doing? Okay!
He's turning Rotor beaten stuff.
Why am I drinking water?
I should drink my water.
You're not ready, fuck! Come on, let's go! Oh shit, I'm safe. I'm not gonna say anything about...
Area with death ahead.
Panorama, I love Panorama! I love Panorama, let's kill it!
Okay, okay, Gee's lost, Gee's lost.
Crazy asshole, what the fuck? I see Panorama, I kill!
My dog! We are in danger, we need to... Panorama!
What are you doing, Panorama? What the fuck are you doing? Hello. I recommend being safe here.
G, get him, son! Panorama!
You bastard!
I think you're shocked.
Who died?
I died at the exact same place I died last year. I didn't learn my lesson. Come on! Kill the Panorama! Kill it!
Why are you with me?
I... Oh god, hold on. Gee, I recommend you something, shut the fuck up.
I'm sorry, my man.
No, don't be, you're drunk. You don't have control over yourself, and neither do I.
I'll kill Panorama!
BGA, Masper, you still alive?
I don't want you to die, I feel like you're completely gone. I don't want you to be that way. Gone that way, if you know what I mean.
I don't want Panorama!
My god! Leave me!
By the way, Nick, there's 2 of them, so you can go fight them.
Okay, oh god!
No, Mike, he died!
Oh, Nick is going for the other Panorama!
What the fuck? Where is my drink gone? Where's my drink go? What the hell?
I'm doing that, Niko, it's like fucking no, no!
Gee is so drunk, he can't even drink anymore.
I want that 10 dollars, man.
Kill the Panorama!
Why is there this random obsession with Panorama?
The fuck you doing?
Stop!
Jor is drunk, Gee, go home.
No! Don't tell me what to do!
You're not his mom.
I'm gonna go first, B.
Oh, here's the Panorama!
BGM!
It's Niko versus the other Panorama! No, BGM died!
What do you want?
No! BGM, Gee! I have to survive.
Oh! You have to rename to BFM now.
Come on, go!
Please not rename, please not rename, team name inconsistent, please.
Oh god, I hate this part.
Easier on brain. Oh my god!
Oh no, yeah!
Yeah! You're the fan, man!
You know what? Money for me. Instead of money, I want more beer. No, no, no! Oh shit, that was cross. Thomas, Thomas! Babos! I can kill the booty! I deserve that 10 dollars! Yeah, Panorama!
When you want to kill Panorama, Panorama kills you.
I forgot to fight.
You have the ass!
Typing from the ground.
Next!
What the fuck?
What?
What the fuck? Where's my game? Okay.
Gee, so dead, man! Gee, what happened?
Gee, please survive. Please, please don't die. We need you.
We're game!
They're gonna be for Panorama's system, oh?
Join! 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 Join!
Join, join.
June!
Join.
We're game, we're game.
Are you gonna be this drunk for today's session?
I am supposed to host a cup now, what the fuck am I going to do with my life?
My last delight.
Well, uh, it was...
Oh, fuck you! Fuck you!
What's this?
Pickups?
Oh yeah, you added some maps.
Wow, no, Sami, you're...
So many pickups.
Okay. Wait, are you fake? Are you fake? I'm gonna give someone a mission. I guess I want that texture on the grass.
I don't want...
Oh no, oh my god! Please, please, please!
It is annoying. It is annoying, I'm safe.
You're done for.
What is that?
No, 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 not again, not you again.
Fuck it. Fuck it, answer mine.
I got tired.
What the fuck? The track is non-existent, you should have practiced the fuck, man!
Oh god, oh god, oh god!
Wait, why is Panorama first?
It's me?
You have a lava first, let's go! No, I'm a lava!
What the fuck? Is it even legal?
Was it able to turn out a mirror?
Okay. Okay, I got it. I think I almost died. I'm alive, I'm alive. Don't worry.
We have to kill Panorama.
Save me! Save me! Please!
I stopped the bumping for the Panorama. But I can do something.
Where are you?
I'm doing away.
It's a lava.
Help me!
I don't see your default. I'm sorry. You're gonna have to die slowly.
No, for fuck's sake!
One Panorama instead! One Panorama instead!
Gee! Panorama gone!
No, no, I'm not dead.
I'm alive! Almighty, almighty!
I'm alive, I'm alive. I'm alive, I'm very much alive.
No, I failed! Ah, come on, come on, come on, come on! Mighty, you're my...
Why is the timer so slow? Oh, horse is dead, okay, that makes more sense. Apparently, there's a lot of people dead here, okay?
It was you, pause it, pause it! Tell him, people!
Gee, stop typing, please.
I refuse to die! Ah, this is all. I live, bitch, no.
Oh yeah, I didn't even have a voice, right?
I've got nothing, look, I'll prove it!
Oh, we're done, man!
I didn't drink! I didn't drink for my death, let me just pour myself a shot and drink for you. Cheers! Also, kill Frost, he's a tip.
Okay.
We're never easy, man.
I'm alive, I'm alive!
I'm not gonna die here.
Gee, please, chill out a bit.
You're asking a drunk man to chill?
Yeah.
I feel like you're doing your worst.
Ah, my god, my cat wants kudo, he went to one drug! I'm so... Kudos, Gee!
Then or not, you can still give good call to Kitty.
Oh, kudo! No! No! Kudo! I love you!
That was a zap, right? Help! Help! Okay, I'm good. I'll survive this. I'll show you how.
I love you!
You're screwed, BGM!
Oh, this is dead! No, I'm not, I'm not, look at this. I'm alive. I'm alive.
I didn't say BGM is dead, I said Ezzy is dead, you fucking idiot!
Ezzy, you're having your time in the water.
And Ezzy died too!
Oh, no more. There is an invisible wall there.
No, no! Why? Why the fuck is Zapatilla playing a death one? Does he know what he is?
BGM, no way, let's go!
Zapatilla, this is life or death! The fuck you playing a death one?
No, no, that's fake!
He wants to die, he has a death wish. Respect his death wish. It's too dark for me to say, what?
Oh, he's not alive, fuck you.
He's playing...
Panalama.
Gee, both panoramas are dead.
No, I'm alive.
Oh no, G is still alive.
He called the Nile.
He survived?
Fuck you.
Yeah, I don't know.
Must be a panorama cat.
I'm supposed to be made... Oh, wait, where am I? I'm dead.
Playing panorama?
BGM is playing chess.
Three d chess.
Chess card?
You mean 4d. Chess is only kind of 4d.
Let's go!
Let's just go to the end of the joke and say infinity, okay?
Infinity d chess with pickups. Just infinity d chess. You cuss this.
Kick the dog.
You got to proceed and...
I'm too smart for this, bro.
This track sucks!
I am back.
This track fucking sucks! Goranito! What have you done? You do the drift track where you can live? What have you done, Goranito?
Flash, throw, walk, quit, you're the same love, too.
No, I will make sure Osvaldo does not win.
I'm not saying to, to, I'm not saying to give up, I'm saying to go quit.
Accept your fate, no. My fate is to kill Osvaldo.
What the fuck are you doing? You just used battery on rotor. Do you know the effects of battery on rotor?
Yes.
Idotti.
It allows me to catch Osvaldo. Fuck, you finished, no!
I'm not touching.
Okay, next, I love you. 2G run, pickups off, well, ready.
Alright, this is time.
Are we letting Frost?
No, but totally one is still on game.
Spectre has, please go back to ready.
I was on my fifth lap.
I'm still on ready, so.
Join.
I was on last time.
My idea has the ban. Has the ban, come on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There you go.
Come on panorama, let's do it.
There you go, good boy, good boy.
Groom.
I have a strong feeling about this, drunk already.
I haven't drunk since long ago.
Oh my god!
In the pack, let's go!
Oh my.
I don't want to watch.
Please, CCs, every single one of you, for fuck's sakes! Cue the panorama! No! Ah, yes! Mission accomplished! Mission accomplished! I, I...
I killed myself.
I am so happy, I am so happy, the panorama is dead, I, my life is for me. I am so... No, oh fuck. I need to finish, I just need to finish one track, for fuck's sakes, I am so done. You need to stop drinking, so you need to stop dying, so you need to actually finish. Don't tell me what to do. Fuck you. Fuck you too, leave me alone!
No, no.
You're dead. Surprise, pick not.
You mean deep and not beautiful.
Kill G, he deserves it at this point. No! You fucking idiot!
No, it's bar, go, go!
Wait! Wait, I have a next, what the hell? No, no! Just keep breathing, just keep breathing. Oh, no! Fuck you, fucking idiot! Fuck's sakes!
You're bleeding idiots!
Arma! Take your shot.
You're not wasted, G.
My bot.
Ah, BGM also died, fuck.
Okay, uh, pick for me rum or vodka shot, please, right now. I died.
Water, water, water.
Take a shot of vodka and then drink water. I, I don't have water.
How do you, how don't you have water?
You don't have water next to you when you're drinking. Vodka or rum, pick now.
Go for Slavik setup, you need vodka. Vodka.
Panalama. What's that beautiful private stuff? Rum is...
A cup of vodka, a cup of...
No, 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 no combine, no combine alcohol. No combine alcohol, or alcohol even worse. Rum, okay, I pick for myself because you guys are all chickens. So, I'm gonna pick rum, okay.
Ersu, what are you doing?
Says the one that has to drink before you quickly fell off. Yeah, fuck idiot.
Please find the bucket, dude.
For Ersu.
Man!
F48.
You had one job! You had one job.
Insane. Insane.
Finisihe!
Mighty, can you, can you climb the top of this mountain? Ah, nevermind.
Man, we have 10 minutes to the cup, come on, finish, you fuckers!
I think, I think the cup will be delayed.
Okay, uh, Mighty finish, who is, lock, lock? He's on last lap. There you go, 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 go. Thanks, thanks, next. Everyone join game. What the fuck is next? Everyone win game.
Rejoin, rejoin.
Wipeout, pickups off.
We have three tracks only.
Oh, we have to the moon again, oh god. Enter and step. Wipeout, come on, join.
Finish, you fuckers!
Step on! Frost, Frost, hey, Frost, since millions back.
Oh, true, 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 true.
There you go, 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 go. Go, go, go.
He told me a con.
I have a petition.
Oh, this one. Oh, no.
Gee has to die?
Gee changed your team name on RVA from Zapdonators to Vodkadonators, I think it will match more.
Let's not, let's not make this sort of permanent panorama.
You mean graph, what the fuck is that?
Semi-permanent decisions. Not one drunk.
I'm so like, how could you do that?
You're alive!
We need, we need to have one rule about this session. What stays in the drunk, what happens in the drunk session stays in... Okay? No, out of game bullshit.
Oh my god, no, Ersu can join the Panalama!
Oh no, I'm being bullied by big dogs, man.
So he throws death.
They have two panels versus they have two big dogs.
You are not... Come on, come on Panalamas.
Oh, there's so many, oh, I hate it. Who die?
Do you think you're gonna escape my video compilation, Ashen Forest? I don't want to escape the video compilation, I'll give my footage to you. I'm recording as well, sir. Cue the panorama, that's all I ask.
Oh my goodness, what the fuck?
What the fuck are you doing? Nikur, 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 Nikur.
You had one job, you're panorama.
Gee, Gee, lemme, lemme speak, okay?
Como Ersu will know?
I, I, I forgot it's without pickups, that's why. I wanted to donate some zaps, you know?
Uh, I, I see, okay, that makes more sense. Why the fuck is Bakamita alive then? And Ersu, and BGM, what the fuck are you doing?
Yes, yes, with him. Ersu, we love it, try it.
You need to cue the panoramas, man! You are a donator for a reason.
I, I think, yeah.
Panorama.
Go ahead, go ahead, Gee, go, go.
No, 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 speak, I need you to answer my question, why the fuck do you...
Um, the reason is simple, uh, there are two reasons actually. Number one, how I can donate...
Two reasons?
Yeah.
Okay.
Number uno, uh, how I can donate some zaps and push them off, uh, when it's, uh, pickup off, picks off. Uh, second, second horizono, uh, my power, my power is slowly unloading.
Ah, makes sense, okay.
I think I need, uh, I need more beer.
Makes perfect sense.
So, yes. Triple Panalama.
What the fuck? Why I trip panoramas, I'm so disappointed. Because you suck! I'm so disappointed.
I can't rave with, uh, FWB.
The most wanted gang? Okay, 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 guys.
Okay, apparently everyone's done, okay.
Guys, now we're playing most wanted session against panorama.
J, J, J o cock house, J o cock house. Everyone join back, everyone join back.
I don't know, how can I ba, how can I join back if I saw bad?
No, that is, that is the normal jail cock, what the fuck am I doing?
Can I go in with the MF1, please?
I cannot function, I cannot function. We reanalyzed!
What are you doing?
Okay, it's time to put panorama in jail.
Papo peppo people.
Mighty, mercy.
I swear, I'm gonna win this one, I don't care what anyone says, fuck you. I mean, I don't care what you say, so fuck you too.
We're Panalama.
What the fuck are you doing, Frost? Good job, man!
No, fuck, I'm spinning.
Oh, didn't know there are holes.
You played yourself, I'm, I'm gonna win this, because I'm, I'm that good.
Oh, G is first!
Gee, yeah! Fuck you! I, I have a mission, to beat all the panoramas. Gee?
I'm dead.
Bang guy, oh my god.
Cue them, not win grace.
Since my guy doesn't know how to cue panoramas, I'm gonna teach him. Because he doesn't know what's going on.
I died, how are you gonna make the whole break dead?
Show me, show me how to kill panorama.
He killed, okay, panorama, okay, where is it? Oh, Frost is already there, okay, not Frost, Ersu, Ersu, please. Fuck you!
Not Ersu, Panalama, you have to survive, it's mine.
Gee, I killed the other two Panalamas.
Hold on. Okay, whatever. I'm not gonna kill him, I'm gonna beat him.
You have a panorama.
I'm gonna beat him, fuck you!
I also kill him.
What the fuck? What the fuck? Come here, you little shit! I almost fell in the river. Panorama, please, come on. Panorama, come on, come on, dude, come on, dude. Panorama. What the fuck is that? Come and do me that!
Gee, also higher, kill another panorama.
Oh, oh shit, no, no!
No!
Oh my god. Oh my god.
You're such a noob.
They don't back no feelings, man.
You want me to show me how to kill panorama and beat yourself, good job, buddy.
Good job.
I'm, I'm no worse, I'm so sorry!
Gee, we need to team up.
Hold on, I have no fingers. Hold on a second. My FPS counter isn't on, excuse me? Oh, it's not live. Wait, wait, have I seen, have I seen that only, only Osvaldo's alive? No, I'm still alive, I'm still alive, I'm just sitting around, it's not fucking bad. Is it in game? Why the fuck is... Why the fuck is the FP, the thing that shows FPS, man? God damn it, man.
Only don't be yourself.
You need a ball, you need a ball.
I need to feed my cat.
You're safe, you're safe.
I get already out of the hole? What? How did you do that?
Gee, he's so drunk, huh?
No shit!
Power, why you fingers stay? Ah, na ruh ho doh!
Guys, there is an RVI popped in like six minutes.
Was it that shockwave Ersu?
Where, where am I? I'm still falling.
I think, of all the...
Alright, you're looking for a shockwave for Ersu?
Yes. Ah.
Power, you're taking powers, oh!
Or maybe triple shockwave.
Wait, Power, you have some big drinks, dad. Stop having big drinks, it's not working. You're gonna just live a life of disappointment. Oh, close! Okay, I fed, I fed my cat successfully, who did you finish?
We've got a rescue mission going on, so it's gonna take...
Rescue mission.
How, how come? Wait, did anyone finish? No, we are slow, no problem.
What's the point of finishing? The rescuing mission, that's the most important.
Momo dogs, please, 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 come on. Yes! Drunk Forest, what the fuck are you doing? I'm just slow. Oh, okay, you... Oh, no, no, okay, I'm fine, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Ryan, you moron!
You are a, you are a very good player, congratulations!
I put a fake on there?
No.
No!
Go back, go back in the game, class lady. Two laps, pickups off, to the moon!
I count this as a win, I didn't get a single shockwave.
To the moon! Wait, is this the last? The fuck, that was so fast! What do you mean, we've been here for like two hours, fuck!
Ah shit, I always forgot to join, sorry. When I decided I wasn't last this time.
Wait, wait. Wait, when, when, when I died, did, did I drink? I, I don't think I did.
Just try to get another shot. Do it now.
To be sure.
I'm gonna drink, because I, I don't think I did drink.
Dude, what's your head today?
What the fuck?
Oh my god.
Uh, cheers, fans, okay. Okay, last one.
Wait.
Did you come a bucket, dude?
I forgot about the thing I wanted to do, fuck it, fuck it.
Just fly to the moon. That was the stuff.
I'm totally gonna win this one, ju- just watch. Whatever you say, dad.
Oh, let's kill Mighty. Now I can team up.
What the fuck? Help me, I'm gonna win! We're not gonna help you, you're alone. Kill Antel Kulaso. No! Antel Kulaso. Kill him yourself. He's your target, not ours. No, I can't aim, I'm drunk, remember? We're all drunk, what's your fucking point?
Oh, Niko!
I am Brazilian drunk! Brazilian drunk, better than Polish, whatever you were from.
Oh, okay, 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 man.
It's on.
Oh, I killed Antel, let's go!
Fight is on.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate your efforts. Okay.
Nice BGM, nice BGM.
I don't have the track.
Man, how? How? I swear, I'm gonna win this, I'm so good. Look at this. Whatever you say, dad. Power, wait, whatever you say, dad.
I'm trying to get Frost.
I'm gonna get your ass.
I'm trying to get Frost.
Please. If you cue Frost, I'm gonna give you 10 dollars. No, you're not gonna deal, no, you're not going to. What the fuck is BGM saying? He's drunk, apparently. No shit, dude. How many times do we have to remind everyone that every fucking drunk?
Not me.
Power, I wish chasing 10 dollars, save me.
No! Dude, dude, please. Why do you like this guy? This guy sucks, it almost flipped by itself. Please let me, please let me, please let me.
Gee, I'm currently not first, what's going on?
I, I died. I'm not first because I'm bad, remember? You were saying that you're good? No, I'm bad.
Lol, lol, Lexi.
Help me, I'm bad. So, and no, no help?
It's large, yeah.
If you're, if you're good, you're gonna do it without help.
Please, please.
Go that you're good.
You go papo pepe momento.
Come on, man!
Papo pepe, papapi, papope. Time to drink.
You, did you fall?
Yes.
Okay. That's sad.
But I was behind you, I was behind you, don't worry.
Here. Okay, okay, Action Forest, I commend you! Uh, drive off!
No! I make my own decisions, sir. Ah!
No, no, I got chased.
I'm not your servant.
Please let me have this! Please let me have this, no!
No!
I'm the best!
If you're the best, you don't need me to give it to you. Too fast.
Please, let me finish! No!
Well, he died in the damn.
I'm gonna sacrifice for the team, oh my god. He made it! He made it? He made it! Let's go! I didn't catch the plan? Mate?
There's something I didn't think about when sneaking in the alcohol in my arrow. How the fuck am I gonna sneak alcohol in with Oster?
I have to pee.
Sleep well, bruh.
Don't forget your bucket.
We need to try, please.
I want to make myself to one, please.
Oh no.
Okay, uh...
Oh no.
Are you done, luck? Why are you alive?
One minute.
Oh my god, there's somebody still racing!
Panorama number 1.
I'm fucking last because my monkey just be perfectly started.
I am, I am so disappointed.
You're disappointed that you decided to kill yourself.
Okay, was this the last? Okay, thank you for joining.
There's someone racing, there's someone racing, they might fall! Let them fall!
No, I'm not.
How? How?
Panorama. They're getting slower, like, in Sumatra, unlike you, you fucking idiot.
One hundred meters!
Come on, finish, finish, come on, come on, come on, there you go, okay, good.
Okay, uh... Was this the last one?
Yes, yes, I was the last one.
Okay, okay, uh, thank you for joining.
Thank you for hosting this.
Thank you for hosting the thing. I hope you're gonna be alive.